Welcome to the Ward 2 Budget Town Hall Meeting. My name is James Freddie Bolger, and I'm sure a lot of you could think of better things to do than be here on a beautiful Saturday afternoon, but thank you all very much for coming. Continuing the practice, Mayor Gray took office over two and a half years ago. We gather to learn about the financial status of the city we love. The mayor has gone ward by ward educating the citizens on his proposed budget. Before I introduce the mayor, I truly believe that you will see a budget that is thoughtful, progressive, compassionate, and practical. This budget not only invests on the future of the district, but actually captures the great opportunities of the future for the district and its residents. Please join me in welcoming the mayor of the District of Columbia, Vincent C. Gray.
I had to read it off the phone. So much for technology. Well, good afternoon, everybody. I want to thank all of you all for being here on a Saturday afternoon. I do have some good news for you. These presentations normally take about an hour and a half in the discussion and whatnot, but we've reduced it to 90 minutes this afternoon. Just for Ward 2. I want to thank those who also are cosponsoring with us today, and all of our A and Cs. 2A, 2B, 2C, 2D, 2E, and 2F. And I think I know most of the commissioners who are involved in this, and I hate to single out one, but I happen to know 2E better than probably any ANC in the city. And they do a great job. Ron Lewis, and I saw Bill. Where's Bill? Bill Stahl was here too, somewhere. He made a pretty good move. He was downstairs. You know how folk do? They're downstairs when you come in and like, "Gone." All right, Bill Stahl, all right. Is there a Nationals game this afternoon? Is there a Nationals game this afternoon? Our team has gotten off to a little bit of a rough start, but we have such high expectations. You know, I have stopped talking about the World Series and all that. I didn't even start it when the season started, because I just want to be, I want to see a successful season. And a successful season to me is if they get past, you know, where they were last year, which was in the playoffs, and maybe win a few playoff games, maybe win the World Series. In any event, I'm delighted to be here. This is our fifth Town Hall meeting. We have worked as hard as we can to be as transparent as we can about this budget. This is a budget that we are excited about. No budget can you ever fund everything you would like to. That's why you will see at the end a contingency budget, contingency list that we've set up of items that if we get more money, and we're trying to work with Dr. Gandhi, whatever it takes Dr. Gandhi to get a few more dollars out of this, you know, to be able to fund some additional things, and we'll share that with you at the end. But I'm also delighted to be here with the council member from Ward 7, a man who I've worked with for 22 years. What did I say? You know, that's a second, I've done that before. What is it? What is it? Yeah. I did that once before. There's something Freudian about that, Jack. I don't know what it is. The council member from Ward 7 minus 5. Yeah, right. That's what it was. There you go. Thank you for bailing me out on that one. In any event, he's a gentleman I have worked with for 20-some years. I was the director of the Department of Human Services when he became the council member in Ward 2, and we really worked closely together to try to create a different kind of presence for people who are homeless, individuals as well as families. I know he knows this, but we had these hotels downtown that were just, you know, crowded with families that had been stuck in these places, and we had these trailers that were down in Foggy Bottom, and frankly, we worked together and we got it all done. We got all those families out of the hotels, got them into apartments, and we got all the individuals who had been in the trailers placed in other programs. In fact, for the first few weeks, we actually sent a bus over to Foggy Bottom to pick up people who still may have been showing up because they thought the trailers were going to continue to be there. And he's someone who I've enjoyed working with over the years, and certainly the time that I was on the council and chair of the council when he served with me for four years as chairman pro tem. So please join me in welcoming an outstanding legislator, Councilmember Jack Evans.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Gray, and good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Ward 2, and thank you all for coming out on this beautiful day to engage with the mayor and his staff on the budget for the District of Columbia for next year. And it's very important that we all become involved with the budget, because the budget is the roadmap, the determination of what's going to happen in the weeks, months, and years ahead, and this is your real chance to have a lot of input into that. And let me first begin by thanking our mayor. Mayor is doing a very good job, excellent job as mayor, and as he recounted, we have worked together for many years on many, many projects, starting with the homeless families on the General Scott. Remember the General Scott Inn, the Braxton Hotel over on Rhode Island Avenue, and how decrepit they were, and what has, how that's all changed? And we've worked together on really revitalizing this city, taking it from a city in 1991 that was really in desperate straits, and it really was. There was a chance that this city could have gone the way of Baltimore, Detroit, or Cleveland, but it didn't. And because of the leadership of Chairman, and now Mayor Gray, we have really changed that dynamic. And to find ourselves, and I don't want to steal the thunder from the CFO and others, but to find ourselves today as the most fiscally responsible jurisdiction in America. And for me to make a statement like that, given where we were, is an astonishing achievement. And I'm going to, I know he'll be recognized as well, recognize our CFO, Dr. Gandhi, who has done a superb job. Give him a round of applause, for really leading the way to do that. And also, I just want to recognize a couple of the people, and I'm sure the mayor's going to do all that too, but we have our school board representative, Jack Jacobson, and then Mary Lord, who was ours and is at large. We're there here somewhere. Could they raise their hand someplace? Over here's Jack, and Mary's over here. And there's a bunch of ANC commissioners in addition to the ones that were already mentioned. Give them a big round of applause too, because I started out my career as an ANC commissioner right here in Dupont Circle, and it was one of the most enjoyable jobs I had, and really led to a lot of learning about how this city operates. I want to say the mayor's budget this year is an excellent budget. He and I, how we work this is I generally show up with the mayor's office with my list and say, "Mr. Mayor, this is what I would like to accomplish in the budget." And this year, the mayor was able to really accommodate almost everything that I was looking for, not only for the ward, but for the city. So just a couple of highlights for the ward. In this neighborhood, the budget includes funding to renovate Stead Park, and as you know, we've done that a couple of times, and this renovation, I think, will really go a long way towards making that one of the great parks in the city. It includes money to renovate the clubhouse over at Mitchell Park over in Sheridan Calorama. It includes money to do the Martin Luther King Library, you know, our central library, which is also in Ward 2. The DMV in Georgetown is going to reopen in Georgetown Park, and as many of you know, that's so important for people who live all around to have another facility to go to to get your, get your car registered and things like that. And the municipal bonds, for those of you who are concerned about that, that tax is going to be eliminated, and it goes on and on from there. And so I was very pleased, and probably the most important thing to me was the, and Mayor, I want to congratulate you on this, and he deserves a big round of applause, the putting in funding to keep all of our neighborhood libraries open seven days a week. And I think that is, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. That is so important to, not only to our children, but to adults who use those libraries as well. So again, I am very pleased to be here today. Thank you all for coming out, and I'm pleased to work with the mayor as we go forward. The council now has this budget, and I would just ask this of all of you in the room today. As I outlined what I mentioned in the mayor, and others will outline what they mentioned, it's really critical that we keep the money where it is. And what do I mean by that? The council now has the budget, and my colleagues on the council sometimes steal money and move it into things that they want to use it for. Steal is a strong word, but I say it for a good reason, because they steal money. It is important that the library money, to keep the libraries open, stay with the libraries and doesn't go somewhere else, or that the money for the parks stay with the parks and doesn't go somewhere else, because I've seen that happen. And the one thing that council members tend to respond to is the public. So your voices are very important during the hearings and during the deliberations, starting with the chairman, Chairman Mendelson, and working your way around, that if you agree with the way the money is allocated, and I'm telling you I do, as your representative, I've looked over this, I agree with it, you need to help the mayor and myself keep those funds where they are and not allow any shenanigans down at the council. Okay? All right. Thank you all, and God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I know you've got a busy schedule today too, as council members always do. So if for some reason you have to leave earlier, we perfectly understand. As a matter of fact, if you didn't, I'd be like, "What? What's up, Jack? You usually have 10 things to do on weekends, don't you?" So thank you for being here and spending some time with us. Also, I want to express appreciation for Councilmember Evans' comments about the budget too. You have to keep in mind, it's a zero-sum game. You know, if somebody says, "I can find $500 for you to do this," it isn't as if 500 new dollars appeared. It means that the $500 was taken from somewhere else. So if somebody says they're going to do something for you, I'd also ask you to be respectful and say, "Where are you going to get the money from? Where's it coming from?" Because it might come out of something else that is important to you, or important to somebody who is important to you. So at the end of the day, if the budget is $10.1 billion, which this is, all the movement around and everything, it'll still be $10.1 billion at the end of that, because it's hardly likely, I won't say impossible, but it's hardly likely that somebody will be able to come up with new money in the course of it. I guess we've done that before with new taxes, but that ain't happening this year. Not on this end, anyway. Councilmember Evans mentioned our CFO, who really has, I think, done a sterling job. He is out at every one of these Town Hall meetings with us, and this is a victory lap for him. He has been part of the Office of the Chief Financial Office now for 16 years, three years as a director of the Office of Tax and Revenue, and 13 years as our chief financial officer. Now, he has said he's going to retire, and the mistake that he made is he didn't give me a date. So I'm announcing today that Dr. Gandhi will be retiring in 2019. It has been a great delight to work with him, especially the last two years, when we have really worked hard to improve our financial condition. You'll see a chart that really is his chart in one of the early slides, that shows how we came from, I think, a perilous position of our fund balance to being now, I think, perhaps the envy, as Councilmember Evans said, I think we're the envy of the nation in terms of our fund balance at this stage, and you'll see that shortly, and you'll see the trend. But please join me in welcoming our chief financial officer, Dr. Natwargande.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Evans. I'm delighted to be here with my colleagues, David Yumansky, Stella Hodge, Steve Capala, and Gordon McDonald somewhere there. We are very pleased to work with your team, Mr. Mayor, of Eric Goulet, Alan Lu, absolutely first-rate team that you have put together that has produced the result of this budget. And I entirely agree with a representative who introduced the team today, and you in particular, that it is a very progressive budget and practical budget. Above all, I would go further and say, it is also what we would call in the financial zingle, the structurally balanced budget, meaning we are not going to take anything more than what we, we are not going to spend anything more than what we take in, and also that that would mean that we are not going to use our so-called saving account or the fund balance, a billion and a half dollar. Mr. Evans and Mayor, you are exactly right. We were in a very perilous condition with mid-'90s, with some $500 million deficit in our fund balance. Today, we enjoy a billion and a half in our fund balance, and our revenue bonds are rated triple A. This is remarkable journey, as Mr. Evans pointed out, from mid-'90s to where we are today. That is because of a very fiscally prudent leadership that we enjoy currently under your chairman, mayorship, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Evans as a head of the finance and revenue. As Mr. Evans pointed out, that we are truly doing extraordinarily well when you compare with other cities of comparable size. Indeed, we are doing better than any other major city in the country. And I want to applaud you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership on that front. And it is not simply the words that I'm speaking here. These are actually the reserves. As during mid-'80s and '90s, people were voting with their feet, walking out of the city. Now they are voting with their feet coming in the city. We are adding about 1,200 new people every month in this city. This is remarkable. Our population growth has been the highest of any other city, any other jurisdiction in the country. Further, we can see throughout the city, but particularly in this ward, there is a boom going on in terms of economics. People from all over the world, we would like to spend money in this city, in this ward indeed. Further down, we have a city center development, Mayor is going to talk about that, $700 million development. Again, the money came from the Middle East. North of that, the Convention Center Headquarters Hotel, again, the money came from the Middle East. Mr. Mayor, in the Middle East, they have more money than God, and God knows it. But I'm so delighted that they want to come to the city, and they want to come to the city because they recognize the economic leadership that you provide, that the financial and fiscal prudence that we have exhibited through a very balanced, socially responsible budget. And I want to congratulate you for that budget, and we continue to work with your team, as well as now with the council, Mr. Evans, Mr. Mendelson, and all others at the council level. I'm quite confident that when it goes to the Hill, it will be a balanced budget as it is today, and that we will march on to better economic heights. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's start the budget presentation at this stage. Our theme for this year is investing for tomorrow, and that's a lot of what these dollars are being invested in, to be able to not only address the needs and programs and services right now, but also for the future over the next five, six, 10, 20 years. In fact, you have your sustainability plan on your seat, and I hope you'll take a copy with you. That is actually a 20-year plan. We actually started the investment in the sustainability plan this year, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and we're proposing to continue that for fiscal year 14 as well. The first slide shows you the fiscal turnaround that we talked a little bit about. You can see that line start to go back up again as we hit 2010, 2011, and 12. We made a commitment to really restore fiscal rigor to the city, and we made some really tough decisions, some of which were not very popular. In a couple of instances, I think we raised some taxes. We also made some cuts in the budget that frankly had not been done. And the purpose of doing that was to really stabilize the financial condition of the city. And if you look at what we've been able to do this year, you will see that it was worth it, making those efforts. I too want to thank our Office of Budget and Finance in the mayor's office, led so aptly by Eric Goulet and the staff, John McGaw, who heads the capital budget, and we have other members of the mayor's Office of Budget and Finance throughout the audience, working in concert with the CFO. And I know Gordon McDonald is in here, he's the head of the, there he is, head of Budget and Finance for the CFO. And we do work together as a team, and we've got a product that we are very proud of at this stage. In any event, our fiscal condition has gone to, almost tied with the highest-ever fiscal fiscal position in our fund balance that the city has ever had, $1.5 billion. And by the end of 2010, we were at the point where we were imperiled. When I first went to Wall Street, I guess 45 days after I had been elected and installed, all I heard was, "What's going on with the fund balance? The fund balance has been spent down, et cetera, et cetera." And I said, "Well, we are committed," because that's one of the commitments I made, "to rebuild the fund balance, to bring back fiscal stability to the District of Columbia." And that is precisely what we've done. We had a surplus at the end of 12, of 11, excuse me, at the end of 11, of $249 million. And then the audit we got just in February, we had a $417 million surplus. And it would have been wonderful if you all had been with us on the meetings with the rating agencies this year. There was virtually nothing that could be found that was wrong with our financial condition. And it was so good, in fact, that a few weeks after we got back, we got the news from Standard and Poor's, which is one of the three rating agencies, Fitch and Moody's, the other two, we got the news that we have been upgraded from, our general obligation bonds have been upgraded from A-plus to double A-minus, which is quite a feat in this fiscal climate, given the federal situation. And by the way, just so you know, to put it in context, Standard and Poor's was the rating agency that downgraded the United States government. So we needless to say feel very good about that. And we've been able to do all of this, staying within our, staying within our 12% debt cap. No new taxes, no new fees in this budget, which I think is good news. In addition to that, we have, in the last revenue estimate, which we got from the CFO was $190 million, it factors in consideration of sequestration. We are assuming that we could be vulnerable because of sequestration on the revenue side to lose $50 million. So it's another way of saying that but for sequestration, the revenue estimate would have been $240 million, and probably would have been able to resolve a number of the problems that we have, which you'll see at the end, in terms of things that we weren't able to fund in this budget. We also, as Jack indicated, we've eliminated the out-of-state municipal bonds tax, and another tax called the possessory interest tax on Lotto. Lotto is the land acquisition for housing development opportunities program, which is almost a double tax. These are people who are, I guess, moving into co-ops, and they pay a tax called possessory interest tax as well as property tax. So they would be in double tax, so we've eliminated one of those taxes. They'll still pay property taxes. The next slide shows you how growth is occurring at this stage, and it really is quite, if we stay with this formula, our city will be fine. We will be fine in the future, today, tomorrow, next week, next month, next year, and a decade from now. First of all, our income tax is growing, and that's because of three reasons: a lower unemployment rate. Our unemployment rate was 11.2% when we got here, and it just went down again. I think we got the news yesterday, or the day before yesterday, that we now have gone from 8.6% unemployment to 8.5% unemployment, which is still high, but we're going in the right direction, ladies and gentlemen. As Dr. Gandhi indicated, our population is growing, and also we're growing jobs. We have added, we've lost government jobs. We have lost, I think we actually gained government jobs. I can't figure out how we did that. In the last, in the last, we gained 2,900 government jobs in the last, last report over the last one or two days. We'll get the analysis of that. But that means now, instead of having lost 4,000 government jobs, we will have lost 1,100, I guess it is, do the math, 2,900, 11,000, that is 4,000, right? So 1,100 government jobs have been lost, but we've actually gained, which is where we have really been trying to influence the growth of this city, we have gained almost 30,000 private sector jobs, and that's ultimately where the growth will occur in the city. We also, because we are adding businesses, and businesses are growing, we've added in each of the 13 and 14 about $70 million. And then our sales tax, and this is really uplifting, we have wanted, for example, to end retail leakage. Who knows what retail leakage is? Hmm, I know you know, Eric. You better know. Retail leakage is very simply put, saying that I live in the District of Columbia, and I go spend my money in Maryland or Virginia or somewhere else. It means instead of purchasing things in the city, we purchase it in another jurisdiction, which means the sales tax then goes to another jurisdiction. So we've been trying to create more business opportunities to keep the dollars here in the city. And what that has resulted in is a projection of this year of $79 million more, but $93 million more in fiscal year 14, which means that we are growing in our, in our stemming the flow of dollars outside the District of Columbia. How many people in here have been to Costco since it opened? Yep, that probably accounts for all the money we're seeing coming in there. This is the first Costco we've ever had in the city, and we've had Costcos in Maryland, we've had Costcos in Virginia, and people have been going to those Costcos, spending -- I was at a Town Hall meeting the other night when a lady raised her hand, she said, "It's more convenient for me to go to Virginia." I said, "Can I put my hands around your throat?" I hope she was joking, but I don't know. In any event, Costco is a great example. I actually do the following, which is a bit odd, I admit that, but when I go to Costco, the first thing I do is ride through the parking lot, and I ride through the parking lot to look at the tags. I want to see where the cars have come from. And characteristically, I have seen about half the cars from the District of Columbia and the other half from Maryland or Virginia somewhere else. So we're not only starting to keep our people in the District of Columbia, we're now creating retail leakage in the other places, because they're coming into the District of Columbia to be able to spend their money, which is absolutely a wonderful contribution to our economy in the city. And if we can preserve this, if there was one thing out of this presentation I could talk about, I would talk about this, because this is the formula for being able to ensure fiscal stability in the future of the city. We just need to make sure, as we gain revenue in the city, we make the infrastructure investments that we need to make. And you'll see some of those being made now, that if you don't make them, down the road, we will wish that we would have done that. The next slide shows how we're spending the dollars in this budget. 40% going to human and support services, human support services, which a lot of people think that we don't spend, maybe we don't spend enough, but I think we spend a lot. We spend 40, not 40, we spend $4 billion on human support services in the city. Another $2 billion, or 20% on public education, 11% or $1.1 billion on public safety and justice, and then the rest spread across those areas that you see, public works, economic development, and financing. And obviously, if you do the totals on that, that adds up to a budget of about $10.1 billion. And that's, the reason for that is, if you ask another city what their budget is, it won't be anywhere near $10 billion. Anybody know why Philadelphia, or Baltimore, or Detroit, LA would have a smaller budget than our city? Anybody know why? State services, because we are a state, a county, a city, and a school district, all rolled into one. In many places, there are separate budgets. To get, to get the size budget we have, you'd have to add up all four of those budgets: the state budget, the county budget, the city budget, and the school district's budget. So when people evaluate our budget, they have to take that into account. Programs like Medicaid, or mental health, or juvenile justice, or TANF, those are all run by a state somewhere else. You would never see those budgeted in the city or county's budget. Next slide shows something that we've tried to do, and that is, these are the groups that we met with, and I think you have it in your hard copy also, before the budget was completed. And as Councilmember Evans indicated, we met with council members too, so that we could understand what they saw the needs being, and did the best we could to try to reflect those needs in the budget. And I think that's why we've tried to perfect this over the last two or three, this is my third budget, we've tried to perfect this over the last three budgets, and what you have is a concept that's pretty fundamental. You have an inclusive budget. And what's wrong with talking to people as you put together a budget? What's wrong with knowing what people think? What's wrong with knowing what people feel they need in order to get to a fiscal plan that is good for the city? And that's in essence what we did in this instance. So what you see here is before the budget was completed, and now we are, you know, getting around the city, meeting with everybody we possibly can. In addition to these Town Hall meetings, I don't know, how many organizations have we met with, Eric? Over 30, just after the budget was done, right?
Probably at least 20 more after that.
20 more after that. So it's an effort to let everybody know what's in it. Frankly, if there's somebody who says, "I don't know what's in the budget." Frankly, if, if there's somebody who says, "I don't know what's in the budget," it's really their own fault, because we are replete with opportunities to do that. I mean, who would not want to come out on a bright sunny Sunday, Saturday afternoon to be able to talk about the budget of the District of Columbia? What's wrong with their dedication, Ruth? They can do better than that, can't they?[616.54][616.54](LAUGHING). What frames this budget is the One City Action Plan. And some of you in this room were with us in February of 2012, when we put together a, a citizen summit over at the convention center. We had 2,000 people there, and then we had another 500 who were online. So we got extensive input on what people thought they wanted this city to look like today and in the years going forward. And what we've tried to do is something that jurisdictions typically don't do, and that is to try to match up the dollars as best we can with what people say is important to them. You will see very shortly, in fact, it's the next slide that focuses on housing. The number-one priority for people who attended the summit last February of 2011, 2012, was affordable housing. So we are investing in affordable housing, or proposing to, $100 million. And frankly, I want to, I want to echo what Councilmember Evans said too, and that is,[684.11][684.11](APPLAUSE), I hope the council will leave this budget intact, because it does reflect what members said they want. We tried to put as much as we could in there. This is a budget that I think we can grow on. And he was absolutely right in his comments about that. And I hope that his colleagues will, will heed the, the direction that he espoused when he was at the microphone. In any event, $100 million, $87 million will go into the Housing Production Trust Fund, an instrument that we set up a number of years ago to be able to, to develop affordable housing in the city. Assuming this budget gets passed, we are, we are proposing to spend $67 million of that in fiscal year 13, or that's where it's coming from, in $13. And then another $20 million we're adding to it from fiscal 14. We also are able to do something this year that has been excruciatingly painful the last two budgets. We have this local rent supplement program. Anybody in here familiar with that? It provides, it's almost like a housing voucher for people to be able to have their rent subsidized, people who may be not the highest level of economic means, almost like the Section 8 program at the federal level. So last year, we had to take money out of the Housing Production Trust Fund and put it in the local rent supplement program, because if we hadn't, there were people who were living in places that were subsidized by us who would have probably had to leave because we weren't supporting the local rent supplement program. So we were taking it from one area we didn't want to take it from, to put it in an area that we could ill afford to be able to lose, and that is very painful. And there were people who made that known to us. And we said, "Look, we're trying to get the city to a point where we can be fiscally stable enough to be able to do both of these things." And we have reached that point. This budget does that. It invests in the local rent supplement program, and it also invests in the Housing Production Trust Fund. We have the other $13 million going into a variety of areas. The local rent supplement program, which I menched, mentioned, this will, three will be on top of the two that we already have there, so that'll be $5 million. The HPPAP program, which is a program that funds first-time homebuyers in the city. Rapid Rehousing, which gets people who are homeless, families like those who are in our shelters, back housed again. The Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which stops people from becoming homeless in the first place, because we learn, it's like an early warning system, and we invest in helping them to pay their rent so that they can stay where they are. And then we're investing on top of saving, you'll see, we, we have lost federal dollars coming up for fiscal year 14. What, Eric, about $35 million? $35.5 million in federal dollars. And I think we have made up every one of those by investing our local money, our own local tax money, to keep those services operating. $4 million of it is in victim services, like domestic abuse. And we are not only covering that $4 million, we're investing another $3.1 million. And then we're going to invest in a, in a 21st century technology system to be able to manage our affordable housing in the ci, in the city. We have 15 agencies that are involved in one way or the other in affordable housing, and we don't have a technology system that makes any sense, so we're working to improve that. The next area, in terms of improving the quality of life for all, which is one of our three priorities, is we are fully funding 4,000 police officers in the District of Columbia. It'll be the first time in several years that we've had that many officers. And with a growing population, we want to be able to make sure we are investing in the infrastructure in this city, so we don't wake up one day and say, "Hey, we've added, uh, we've added 50,000 new people, but we have the same, you know, public safety apparatus that we had before we had those 50,000 people." So we're asking for the authority to get us up to 4,000. We think we can do that if this budget is approved. We can do it very early in fiscal year 14, because we have a number of classes right now in the, in the program to prepare our police officers. We're also, excuse me, we're also proposing to invest a little over $7 million a year in MPD for investments in equipment, vehicles, or whatever, and another $8 million in FMES for ambulances, um, for fire engines, ladder, ladders, pumpers, and y'all are familiar with all that terminology. But we're proposing to buy over the next three years, 100 and, or close to 150 vehicles in the fire department alone. Already talked about the domestic violence dollars, and we also are going to renovate Engine House 23, which is right here in War II, right, Ruth? Yep. And we're investing $3 million in that. I talked about making up federal dollars, and here's the biggest chunk of it, right here, $27.9 million in the TANF program. How many folks know what the TANF program is? Wow. The TANF program was a replacement for the old welfare program that was operated many, many years by the, you know, by the federal, uh, by the federal government, the AFDC program, which may be familiar, Aid to Families with Dependent Children. Became the temporary assistance, the needy families program, except the District of Columbia was not running the temporary assistance program, it was running what seemed to be the permanent assistance program, because it said that people after five years will have to be on their own. And back in the, the 90s, the district said, "Nah, I don't think we're going to do that." And they gave, the federal money, of course, disappeared, and the district then started paying all local money to be able to continue those programs. I think it was a benevolent decision that was made, but I don't think it was a responsible decision, because it essentially kept people being dependent when they should have moved to another place. So we've tried to strike the balance between being responsible and being benevolent. And what that has resulted in is a whole new approach to our TANF program. I see, I see David Burns back there, who is our DHS director. He is a national expert who came in when I came in to take on running our DHS program, and he's a national expert on TANF, with three other states you've done this in, right, David? And what we are doing is making sure that people get assessments, first of all, so we know what their skill sets are, what their deficiencies are, and to work on those, and then providing training. And what we have done, and you'll see it at the bottom of this list, we have made sure that we had enough money to keep people supported, if their five years were up, until we can responsibly get them to a place where they should be able to move on their own. We've already reduced the, uh, reduced the support once, is that right? Uh, and we've delayed the next two, because it goes down in increments. We've delayed the next two to give people an opportunity to get their assessments, to get their skill sets in place, so they can move on. You're going to start to see, over the next two to three years, a lot of people who will be moving in a, in a more constructive direction around TANF support here in the city, and I think that is a good thing. We have a new Virginia Williams Center. I won't talk a lot about that today, but we can explain more to you if you like. We're investing money in homeless youth, half a million dollars, a million dollars in '14, half a million this year, and I talked already about the sustaining the benefits to people with an additional $6 million. I am proposing this year that for nonprofits, we create what's called the One City Fund. The One City Fund is for nonprofits. It's to say, "Look, we have a lot of good nonprofits in the District of Columbia. In, in the past, they have, you know, in the distant past now, they've gotten earmarks, which is kind of inherently unfair. It means that, um, "I like you, John, I'm going to give you $100,000, but Eric, it's not that I don't like you, I just can't give you $100,000." And I don't have any particular reason for it, other than, "John, I think what you do may be more interesting to me than what Eric does." Well, we're making that an objective process, and we're not even going to administer it out of the government. We're proposing to put it into the, um, the Community Foundation. The Community Foundation is an organization that has a track record for doing this, run by a lady by the name of Terry Freeman. They manage, right now, 700 funds there, so they are experts in doing this. The money would go there, the application process would be managed out of the Community Foundation, and the decision-making would be managed out of the Community Foundation. What we would be doing is creating the program, and then, of course, we would be monitoring the performance of the Community Foundation. This takes the political, um, the political, the politics out of it, okay? Because the decision-making will be put somewhere else, and political influence will have no impact. Organizations providing education, job training, health, services for seniors, arts, public safety, and the environment. There are four priorities that we have established. Sustainability is one of them. The education is one of them, and then one of them is called improving the quality of life. Now, if a nonprofit can't find itself in that category, I don't know why they exist in the first place. Isn't that, isn't that broad enough? What do you think, Peter? Is that pretty broad? Yeah, thank you.[1287.51][1287.51](LAUGHING). And decisions will be made on the basis of merit. Uh, the next, the next slide is on our libraries, and Councilmember Evans alluded to this. We're proposing to invest $8 million, which will expand the hours of our library, so the libraries all across the city will be open seven days a week. There will be no days when libraries are closed anymore in the District of Columbia. My first year, we were in such difficult straits that all we could do was restore library hours to the Central Library, the King Library, and then the rest of them were closed. And working with the council members, especially Councilmember Evans, we made a commitment now to be able to restore that. We are, we are going to be back to where we were many years ago in the city, in fact, better than we were, because we have more libraries now than we had years ago. Uh, we also are proposing to put $2 million in the purchase of books and other materials, and we're proposing to invest in the modernization of the downtown library, the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library. This would modernize, everybody know what modernize means?[1360.15][1360.15](LAUGHING). I mean, we get in this jargon, man, and start saying things that we all understand. Modernize, to me, means renovate, okay? Renovate the library. It will, it will, is proposing to put another five or six floors on top of the library. Why? Because we have the capacity to do it, but it also, the revenue generated from those additional floors will help to pay for what otherwise might be an unaffordable renovation of the downtown library. This would cost us probably $150 to $200 million to be able to do, which certainly would have been unaffordable in this budget. This will now cost us somewhere around $100 million because of the revenue that will be generated from these additional floors. Could be office space, could be residences, it could be all of the above, but they will generate revenue because of the additional space that's added. We're also proposing to do the Cleveland Park Library, Palisades, and then we're going to finish the Woodbridge Library, which will be a $16.5 million library when it's finished in fiscal year 14. We also are investing in our seniors, right, Dr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
All right. Dr. Thompson is our director of the Office of Aging Services, and, um, he's got some very good ideas. We like his ideas, and, um, ideas are great, Dr. Thompson, it's just the delivery that, you know, you know, that's what people are looking for at the end of the day. Anyway, in all seriousness, we are committed to being an age-friendly city, and that means a place where people, irrespective of what their age is, they hopefully will be able to stay where they are, if they choose to stay. That's what aging in place is. Um, we now have a number of these senior villages, right? Uh, I think we have 10 to 15 across the city now. And the purpose of those villages is to try to get people an opportunity to stay where they are, and we're now going to try, we're going to try to support that even more heavily. We also are providing additional staff for OAS, the Office of Aging Services, to go into nursing homes and try to identify, through assessments, people who really don't need to be in a nursing home, that they could live outside in another place. Um, and we're going to invest a lot of energy in being able to make that happen. Already talked about the municipal bonds. Uh, how many of you all are familiar with the United Medical Center? Okay, how many are familiar with Greater Southeast Hospital? That would be the same place, just a different name. Um, we are investing $12.7 million this year in trying to turn around the business operations of the hospital. It really was about to close, to be honest with you. We have Huron that came in there. We appreciate the council's support for the contract, to be able to help us turn around the hospital. And by the way, um, one of the things that the folks on Wall Street said to us was, "We don't, we don't like the idea that you all are in the hospital business. We don't like you doing that." And, um, we agree. The city doesn't have a storied history of doing well in providing hospital services. Anybody remember DC General? Uh, they did a lot of good services there, but the city's management of it wasn't the best, to be honest with you. So, um, we are investing in turning around the business operations, and in addition to that, we are proposing to build a new hospital. We have $20 million we put into the capital budget this year to start that process. We think that building a new hospital will cost $100 to $150 million. This has $20 million to get the process started, and, um, we think the land that's there, 17 acres of land, in addition to this, that could be available for creating financial, uh, the financial wherewithal to do the rest of the hospital. We are proposing to invest in the arts. Uh, we are doing two things, and you'll see in the, I'm going to mention in the contingency budget, that we actually have more money. If we get more money, we're proposing to invest further, uh, in the, in the arts. We are putting in the budget $250,000 for a strategic plan for the arts in the District of Columbia, and we, in the capital budget, have gone from $2.7 to $5 million a year, or $30 million over the next six years, that will be available for public art. And a lot of that money will be used with local organizations, local artists, to be able to create art and put it in the public domain. How many of y'all know we have our own, our own archives in the city? A lot of people don't know that. You know, your hand was the only one that went up, I think, so congratulations.[1642.76][1642.76](LAUGHING). It is a well-kept secret. It's on a street called Nail Accord. Anybody know where Nail Accord is? It's like off the beaten path, right? Like, some people refer to it as, it's in the alley. Uh, maybe quite literally it is. Uh, we are proposing to take our archives out and put it in a different building. Uh, we are, right, John, $4 million next year, and then $20 million each of the following two fiscal years? $44 million we're proposing to put into creating a real archives for the city. What a great educational experience that will be for our children. We have artifacts in there that date back to 1790. Was anybody living in the city in 1790?[1685.83][1685.83](LAUGHING). Not, not funny, huh?[1688.83][1688.83](LAUGHING). Uh, in any event, we are proposing to create our own archives. We have a couple buildings in mind, but we've got to get the budget approved first. Just some of the investments, and Councilmember Evans mentioned these earlier, we're investing a half a million dollars in the design and engineering for Franklin Square Park, Sted Park, we're putting a million six in, that will upgrade the playing fields there, Rose Park, and I think we're putting money in Volta also, so that isn't even on the list, but Volta's getting investments as well. This year, okay. We are investing in streetcars, and yes, we will have our first, I had a big meeting yesterday with folks about streetcars, because we wanted to verify, our first streetcar line will be up and operational this year. And if, uh, if anybody tells you otherwise, tell them to take a hike.[1740.15][1740.15](LAUGHING). Uh, but we are committed to having our first streetcar line, the, from Third and Eighth Street Northeast, out to Oklahoma Avenue near Spengarn High School, um, which is where the, uh, where the car barn will be built. Budget includes $400 million. That will include, um, a line, by the way, that will go from Minnesota Avenue to Georgetown, all the way across the city. So the second line will actually come into a substantial part of War II, the bulk of War II, actually, and so we're excited about that. And then the historic Anacostia Line also will be up and running during this budget cycle of six years. Uh, we're going to invest money in bike lanes, uh, bike-friendly streetscapes. We're going to add more bike stations to our bike share program. Are you all aware we have the most robust bike share program in America at this stage?[1795.21][1795.21](APPLAUSE). stage? Um, I was sitting, I was on a panel the other day at the Chamber of Commerce, and I was sitting next to the mayor of Hoboken, New Jersey, and she was, she was saying in her comments, she said that she had a meeting of her council that night, and that she was hoping that they would approve their bike share program. I said, "Well, let me tell you, we're way ahead of that one." Uh, and I, I don't know whether they got approved or not, I hope it did, but we have now twenty-two thousand members, uh, in our bike share program, and it's growing, uh, every day. The Georgetown DMV will be reopened in October, uh, two point seven million dollars that will go in and funding it. The renovation of the, uh, DMV is essentially complete, and it, that's, that's not, DMV is not, is not, uh, District Maryland and Virginia, okay? It is Department of Motor Vehicles. Um, and we're excited about that. That'll be four DMVs that will be operational around the city. Uh, we just opened a new one on Rhode Island Row, which is in, in Ward Five, and this will be the reopening of the Georgetown one. And frankly, I think it will substantially, uh, you know, disperse these big crowds of people who come in essentially at the same time, uh, in the, uh, in the DMVs, and, uh, will make it an even more streamlined process. Lucinda in here?
Yep.
Yeah, stand up, Lucinda. I think Lucinda Babers has done a great job with our DMV program. How many of y'all are familiar with grade.dc.gov? It basically, it's, it's, it's consumer input, it's, it's customer input, and DMV was one of the first agencies in last June when we started this, and DMV did not get the highest grade imaginable. In fact, I think it was a C minus or a D, is that right? And, uh, Lucinda was very angry, and I said, "Don't get mad at me, it's the public, you know, it's just the public's feedback we're giving you." But they have, they have come up, and DMV is one of the most difficult agencies from a citizen perspective, uh, in the city. So, that's why I wanted to single her out, because she's done a great job, and it's a pleasure to work with her, and, um, when she's coming, I always look to see whether she's smiling or not. Um, we also are fully funding our Womata budget, two hundred and seventy-four million dollars in the operating budget, and another hundred and forty, I think it is, in the, uh, capital budget. Um, a bit of good news, in addition to the already good news, people have had to pay for replacing their supercans over the last several years. We're proposing that you don't have to do that anymore. We have in the budget the replacement over a period of years, every supercan in the District of Columbia. Um, the first two years, all supercans will be replaced, in fiscal year fourteen and fifteen, and then after that, we're going to add new and improved and larger recycle bins, so that we can encourage people to participate in this, in our sustainability program. So, people won't have to pay for that. We're also going to do everything we can to rat-proof those, those trashcans that are on the streets that have no lids, uh, on them. Uh, we have some pretty, pretty, uh, astute rats in the District of Columbia. They figure out how to get in those trashcans and, uh, do whatever they do. And, uh, we also, last night, we had a, a, uh, a torrential downpour, right? The first thing I checked was what was going on in Bloomingdale, and, uh, I was back and forth, uh, half the night with our city administrator about, uh, whether we had flooding in Bloomingdale, because we have found a solution to that, led by the city administrator. Stand up, Alan. Alan Lewis, our city administrator, and... He led a task force, and literally, this sounds like hyperbole, but it's not. This is a century-old problem. It's a hundred years of flooding that has gone on in Bloomingdale, Rhode Island Avenue, First Street, up, up in those areas, and the task force actually got a solution to this, and we've already started, and by, what, perhaps next March, next February, it will be done. So, we're just trying to get through that period, and we were fortunate, uh, even though as, as, as horrific, uh, as the rains were, uh, last night, there was no flooding, uh, in Bloomingdale. So, we are trying to make it until we get this project finished, and then we will be in pretty good shape, we think. I guess it could happen again, but the likelihood will be diminished, uh, considerably. We also, we also are providing pay raises to our government employees. It's the first time in seven years that some employees have had a pay raise. Um, our unionized, as well as our non-unionized, uh, employees, and including the non-unionized employees and those who have now reached new agreements with us, we are already covering, uh, about seventy to seventy-five percent of the employees, and we'll work, continue to work on the agreements with the others, police and fire, and, uh, some of our, um, our teachers' union, which has its raises already embedded in the funding formula, but also our, um, um, school officers, the principals and whatnot, they're, they're unionized also, and they're negotiating as well. So, we hope to be able to, um, move those, those negotiations along a pace. And our, our pension, by the way, which is the bane of a lot of the, the existence of a lot of jurisdictions, is fully funded. Our pension is full, is funded at the, the level of a hundred and four, uh, percent, which is good news, because that is what brings down a lot of, a lot of states, a lot of cities, a lot of counties, because they can't handle, um, the pension requirements. The second of the three priorities is educating and preparing our, uh, workforce for the new economy, and, uh, a lot, the education, we're investing almost eighty million dollars in additional, um, funding for public education. Uh, we have had to do some things this year around, uh, enrollment. Enrollment had been held harmless for the last two budgets, and it got to a point where the enrollment and the allocations no longer matched up, um, with the, in the budget, no longer matched up with one another. So, even though there's more dollars for public education, there were some distribution changes that had to be made. One of the things that we have done that I'm really proud of, and that is, when we first came into office, we were spending a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars on funding children with disabilities in private schools. The most important aspect of that, to me, is that we had children who, through no fault of their own, could not go to a public school because there were no services available to them. And I, I spent a lot of my career working in the field of disabilities, and I made a commitment that we were going to, we were going to solve that, that we were going to expand services, and one of the ways to create the dollars was to start to bring those kids back. So, we increased the formula, uh, the funding formula for children with disabilities in our public education system, and, um, we have now started to make some very substantial changes, uh, in how children are educated. We had over twenty-two hundred children who were in private schools when we got here. That number is down below fourteen hundred, uh, at this stage, on our way to our goal of cutting the number by fifty percent, and with this budget, we have brought it down the last couple of years, with this budget, we will have gone from a hundred and sixty-eight billion dollars down to the budget of eighty million dollars this year, and we've reinvested those dollars back in public education to increase our capacity, uh, there. In terms of investment in schools, uh, we've got, uh, seventy-seven, we're building, we're building what essentially will be a new Duke Ellington High School, uh, which, of course, is here, uh, in Ward Two. Uh, it will be, I think, one of the finest performing arts high schools, uh, in the nation, and that's a part of four hundred and eighty-eight million dollars that we have in the six-year plan for high schools, and a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars in fiscal year fourteen. So, actually, right, John, about half the money will be spent in Ward Two, in fiscal year fourteen, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, then in terms of middle schools, we are, uh, going to finish, uh, we're, I guess we'll finish all the middle schools over six years, uh, investing two hundred and forty-two million, no, we'll finish all the high schools over six years. Uh, we're investing, uh, two hundred and forty-two million dollars over the six-year plan in middle schools, eighty-one million dollars in two thousand and fourteen. We are constructing two new middle schools in Brookland and one in Shaw, and I guess Shaw used to be in Ward Two, uh, but now it's in Ward Six, so the territory didn't move, so Ward Two, if you want to continue to claim it, it's all right with me. It's Ward, how about Ward Two plus Six, uh, where Shaw is? And then in elementary schools, we're investing nine hundred and eighty-eight million dollars in, in Ward Two, Hyde, Francis Stevens, um, Garrison, and Ross, all will get substantial investments ranging anywhere from two point seven to twenty point nine, uh, million dollars. We're investing money in, uh, special education intervention to try to cover more children who are very young, who may have disabilities that could be ameliorated or maybe even eliminated, uh, by this kind of intervention. Um, one point eight million in early learning centers and a truancy initiative, which is, um, we, we are working hard, uh, to try to be able to solve the truancy problem, uh, here in the city, and, uh, we'll continue to make those, uh, investments. We, we're working on a plan now, and we probably will eventually invest more money once the plan is completed. UDC, we're investing almost two million new dollars in giving them the authority to spend almost ten million dollars. They have the money now, but they don't have the authority to spend it, to try to continue to straighten out the, uh, university. Last area is the, uh, growing and diversifying our economy. We've talked a little bit about that, directly and indirectly. Investing in forty million dollars in the Skyland Shopping Center, which is the longest uncompleted project in the history of, uh, the world. Believe it or not, this is something that's, the discussion on which started in nineteen eighty-nine. An amazing level of patience on the part of the people who live in that area of the city, but we've now stripped away virtually all the legal impediments, uh, to it, and, um, have started to tear down the buildings and move ahead. Investing eighteen million dollars in relocating D.C. Water Facilities. How many of y'all have been down near the ballpark, at the ballpark, or near the ballpark recently? Um, the development is really accelerating there, and we're trying to really facilitate that. You know, for us, investing eighteen million dollars in moving the D.C. Water Facilities will more than pay for itself, because the tax revenue that will be generated by the businesses that open there will pay for the eighteen million dollars many times over. I think we did some calculations, and, um, it's like, ultimately, it'll be, for every one dollar the District of Columbia invests, we'll get twenty-seven dollars back, uh, which is pretty substantial investment. That's pretty good money coming back to the city. Investing in Poplar Point, which is, uh, we hope to get turned over as soon as we can from the federal government to us, there's some work to be done to make that happen. A lot of development now is taking place on the perimeter of the city. St. Elizabeth, Walter Reed, uh, there's developments started there, uh, in both instances, and MacMillan. How many of y'all know where the MacMillan Reservoir is? We are going to put a healthcare, uh, facility there that will provide training, among other things, for people in allied health and other related healthcare positions, because you think about it for a second. We have Children's Hospital across the street, we have the Hospital Center, we have the Rehab Hospital, we have the Veterans Administration Hospital, and then around the corner, we have Howard University Hospital. There are always jobs that are available. We want to work to try to get our own people prepared for those jobs. Anybody know what the percentage, the, the, in terms of the number of jobs in the city, what percentage of those jobs actually are filled by people who live in the District of Columbia? Anybody know the number?
Thirty.
I heard, what was the number?
Thirty.
Who said thirty? Yeah, that grew back there, right? Well, collectively, you all are absolutely right. Three out of every ten jobs filled by people in the city, or put it another way, seven out of every ten jobs filled by people who don't live in the District of Columbia. Calculate the lost tax dollars on that one, because we cannot tax income at its source, and as a result, if I live in Maryland, or Virginia, or Delaware, or wherever I may live, I pay my taxes to that jurisdiction, even though I earned the money, uh, in the District of Columbia. And frankly, while people have talked about having a residency requirement, which we did have, and got sued on and lost, or other things, one of the best ways to do that is to increase the percentage of jobs that are filled by people who live in the city in the first place, and that doesn't become a contentious, uh, issue. Talked about the streetcars, uh, already. We are proposing to build a new Frederick Douglass Bridge. Uh, this bridge is on its last leg, it is down there by the ballpark, it starts in Ward Six and goes to Ward Eight. Um, this would invest six hundred and twenty-two million dollars in a new bridge. Um, the current bridge has about seven or eight years of useful life left, which is about the amount of time it's going to take to build, uh, a new bridge. Uh, if we start now, we'll have a bridge finished, um, so we're hopeful that this stays in the budget, because we need the money, uh, to be able to do this. A substantial chunk of this, I don't know how much it is, John, is federal money, right? That will come to the, uh...
About a third.
About a third of it's federal money, so about two hundred million dollars will be the federal government, and we've had a great relationship with the Department, Federal Department of Transportation. Uh, they're very interested in our streetcar program. I did not mention the, um, program we're doing at Spingarn High School. Uh, we're renovating Spingarn High School, it's going to be turned into a career and technical education program that will train young people in transportation and healthcare, uh, jobs, and those transportation jobs will be, you know, right there in, in many instances, because the car barn that we're building will be right outside, uh, of Spingarn High So much for that. Uh, we had, the staff went through our budget to try to figure out, how many of these, uh, how many of these projects, capital projects, are related in one way or the other to our sustainability plan, which is the, the green document that you have available to you, and there are about two hundred of them. Uh, transportation, water, food, the built environment, health and wellness, and then we're going to have a second round of the Sustainable D.C. Budget, uh, Challenge this year. We're proposing to put five million dollars in it, uh, for the second year. Got some very interesting projects that have been funded, uh, this year involving a variety of things, I won't go into all of those. If you want to know more, you can talk to us afterwards, or raise a question, and we'll try to get it answered. The last two slides are those things that we have not been able to, uh, fund that we would like to fund. Lots of things don't get funded, and there are lots of things that are not on this list, uh, as a result of it. But these are sixteen things that we would like to fund that would cost an additional seventy million dollars. We are, um, we are hopeful, uh, that we get some additional money. We got three more revenue estimates coming up, one in June, one in September, and one in December, uh, during this calendar year, and if we get additional money, and I'm hopeful that we will, for our purposes, these would be the projects, uh, that we invest in, starting with infants and toddlers, uh, which we are, did you all know we have now the most robust early childhood education program, uh, in America? It was really interesting to listen to the President's State of the Union, uh, speech, and hear him talk about early childhood education, and then he used Oklahoma and Georgia, uh, as examples of, we said like, "Hey, what's up? We got the best program in America." And, uh, they said they were talking about states. It's a message in there, y'all. It's a message in there. The message is, "Time for us to be the fifty-first state so we can get into the President's State of the Union speech in the, in the future," right? Hey, go out and vote on Tuesday for the Budget Autonomy, uh, referendum. Got to send a message. You know it's going to be approved, I mean, if it wasn't approved, I'd be stunned, but it's not so much that it gets approved. You know, if I get, if I get, you know, back a statement that says ninety percent of the people voted for it, and it's ninety percent be, translating into two thousand people, or ninety percent translating into fifty thousand people, that's a different statement. The ninety percent means nothing. It's the sheer number of people who come out and vote. So, if you haven't already voted, go out and vote on Tuesday in order to be able to make sure that we send the message about budget autonomy. So, that's the budget for fiscal year fourteen. Thank you all for being here on a Saturday, and we'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
This is a kind of a touchy question, it has nothing to do with you.
Oh, well, forget it then. It is, but, it is budget-related, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
This budget has to go to Congress, and what assurance do we have that it can get through there?
Well, one of the assurances we could have is that we could get budget autonomy. Uh, that's why I emphasize that. Uh, you know, I think we're, we're getting closer, I think, we, I think we eventually are. Now, let's assume this budget, um, this budget has to go there. We have not seen them change anything in the recent past, uh, in our budget, so I think once it leaves here, the biggest problem that we have is the, the delay, uh, in being able to move forward. Um, and when is the last time the Congress approved a budget? Uh, I, I can't even remember. We haven't had a budget for three or four years, have we? So, um, I don't think that there's a danger of it getting changed by the Congress, um, I think the danger is in being in that process in the first place, when there really is no need for it. You know, given the fact that we're talking largely about our own money, and we're talking about something that they don't bother with anymore, then, you know, the reasonable question is, why is it going up there in the first place? The President did include in his fourteen-budget language that said, "Give the District of Columbia budget autonomy," and they are talking about it, and we, you know, we have some friends on Capitol Hill who've been working with us, you know, there, there are people who think, "Well, the Democrats are all our friends and the Republicans are not." That's just, this is not true. Um, one of the, one of the best friends this city has right now is Darrell Issa, uh, who chairs the relevant committee. Uh, we probably talk to him in one way or the other about once a week, and a lot of the things that we want to do in the city, he is, uh, supportive of. He's obviously got to get the support of his colleagues to be able to get it done, but, um, he's somebody who we found that we can really work well with, uh, on the, uh, city's interests. So, I guess the, the, the technical answer is... So I guess the, the, the technical answer is, we could be vulnerable to something whenever it goes into somebody else's court. They have the opportunity to do whatever they choose to do with it. That has not been the recent track record. And frankly, we need to work even more fervently to be able to not have our budget, our dollars have to go up there anymore. You know, like anything else, every other state, it's federal dollars are going to be approved, you know, if they're federal programs, like the Medicaid program, or TANF, or mental health, or juvenile justice. And then we have some special programs, like the TAG program, which helps to support tuition for our, our young people coming out of high school. Let's say they're going to a Virginia State School or a Maryland State School. They can get the tuition paid as if you lived, as if you were a resident of that state. So that could be vulnerable. But what should not be vulnerable are the dollars that are strictly our dollars in the city. And we need to work, continue to work to try to, to get ourselves out of that morass. Yep?
My name is Susan Haight. I'm head of the, excuse me, Federation of Friends of the Public Library. We want to thank you for your support for the library. And we want to make sure that everyone who's a friend here, and we know you all are, that you will put pressure on the committee on education to make sure those dollars stay in the budget. Thank you.
Couldn't agree with you more. It was a little disquieting to watch the hearing. And by the way, she's not here today. I don't think she's here. But I think we have the best librarian in the nation, with Jenny Cooper. Jenny has done a great job with our library. And I hope everybody heard the comment that was just made, and that is, work, work to make, send the message that those dollars need to stay in the budget. Thank you. So, yes.
Hi, thanks. Good. Yeah, my name's Will Stevens. I'm Chair of ANC 2B, and we're very happy to co-sponsor this event. So glad you could also come out to do it in this beautiful building within our ANC again, as he did last year.
This is the second time.
This is the second time I've heard this, yeah. So the mayor also shared this presentation to the ANC Chairs about two, three weeks ago. So it is the second time. What I wanted to say again is, I just really appreciate your, your clear view here that citizens can and should be able to understand a complicated budget and the priorities. So I really appreciate how you do all these town halls and repeat it to organizations and to ANC's and everybody else, because I think it shows that you respect the intelligence of everybody who lives in the District of Columbia to understand what's going on. And particularly, neighborhood home, home concern is we're really appreciative that just four blocks north of here where Stead Park is, that we're going to get a little bit of money for renovating that. And that's going to be a terrific project. And that's an example of, you know, a small, relatively small dollar thing that's really going to affect a lot of people, because there's just hundreds and maybe even thousands of people who use that small park in the area and from around the city. So it's going to be a great project and we really appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you for sitting through this again, Will. We did this, as he indicated, we did it for the ANC Chairs. And I honestly don't think that there's a substitute for citizen input. I think you have a better project inevitably when you get people involved. You know, people worry about, well, if somebody will come out with something way out in left field. Well, left field, something that's really in left field, most people are not going to approve that. Most people are rational and sane and, you know, understand decision-making process. So, you know, everything that we've tried to do has been to try to involve as many people as we reasonably can. You know, some of them are, you know, citizen representatives, like our ANC's. That's probably the purest form of democracy that we have in the city, maybe in the nation. Where you have about 300 commissioners, you know, who each represent 2,000 people. And we presented it to the Chairs. We, by the way, now meet, we've been doing this for what, about a year and a half, meeting with the Chairs every, every quarter? And, and we really have, I think, of 37 Chairs, we have pretty much a minimum of 30 who show up every quarter when we meet. And it's a pretty robust discussion. We have, go on probably two and a half hours in those meetings. And thank you for being there always. Your people should be grateful for the, for the representation that you provide. Yes?
Hi, Mayor. We have two more briefly on Stead, Stead Park. I'm an ANC Commissioner in Dupont under Chairman Stevens, and he's a great Chair. We're very lucky to have him. And thanks for coming to our, to our neighborhood. You know, Stead Park, it's about 1.5 acres. It's the only public green space around. However, there's no trees at all. So it's, this renovation is going to be very useful to provide shade, to provide, to make it much more pretty, make it much more usable to a lot of different groups, not just sports leagues, LGBT community, children, runners. There's going to be a water feature for kids to cool off in the summer. The only thing is, we have the neighborhood very excited and they're, they're just wanting it sooner rather than later. And it's in the fiscal '15 budget, start not, so it wouldn't start until next October at the earliest. So if there's any way, it could be any sooner, the community that I represent would appreciate it. And I have Carrie Cunningham, a mother as well, to speak about that. I would just, I would just also add that we do have a community commitment to add to it, 200, over $200,000 in PUD money and money from the Friends of Stead Park Trust to do maintenance every year. So we're there for you if you're there for us.
Thank you.
I was just, just, John was just saying to me, John, stand up so folks can see. John is our capital budget guru. The point he was making is that the $200,000 that you mentioned could be used to get this started earlier than we otherwise might be able to. So make sure you connect with John before you go, so we can get the process started.
That would be nice to talk about. I did want to say, we, we met with DPR Director Aguirre, and he was very, very helpful and supportive of the park, and we do appreciate him for that.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. As, as Kishan noted, I'm Carrie Cunningham. I have a 15-month-old daughter. I live half a block from that park. And for the past two years, people in the community have been mobilizing, parents and Friends of Stead Park, as you mentioned. So if there is any possibility that we can mobilize the community to obtain some funds in this year, as well as partner to help raise additional funds and, and furthering one of those private public partnerships, we'd be happy to do so.
Okay. Yeah, I just was verifying, a million six is in the budget. Why don't we try to work with you all? Maybe we can get started with the money that you all have in hand. Sometimes we get a chance to reprogram money if a project doesn't cost as much as we thought it originally was going to cost. The, the amount involved in this particular project is not overwhelming by any stretch. So make sure you connect with John and we'll try to work with you and see what we can do. Okay? How you doing?
How are you, Mr. Mayor? I'm Vanessa Bertelli, and I'm a parent at Garrison Elementary. First of all, thank you for this presentation. It was very informative. And I would like to compliment your Deputy Mayor for Education for an Enlightened 2013 Facilities Master Plan. That plan says that the schools in Cluster 7, which are Logan Circle and Shaw, are some of the most in need of strategic investment in the facilities of all the district, of all of the district public schools. And, and particularly Garrison out of that cluster. And yet, this 2014 budget doesn't have anything in it for Garrison. It has $8 million in it in 2015, but that has been the case for the last five years. There's always been something in the budget for us for the following year, and that has consistently been postponed over the last five years. So I'm wondering whether there's a mistake or an oversight, because I, I enjoy Stead Park too. But our children have boarded up slides and they cannot reach the things, because the school was built in 1964 and never touched since. And we have a preponderance of preschoolers that literally cannot reach the things. There's going to be a massive influx of population that is going to be preschool-aged. We need some investment in the school for these, for these young families to stay in the district. So I will be speaking to your guru, Capitol investment for sure, but I'm wondering whether there has really been an oversight.
I don't know that I have a full answer on that one. You actually echo the sentiments of many people, and that is, now, now. And I don't, I don't blame you. I don't blame you at all.
It's been tomorrow for the last five years.
I hear what you're saying. Yeah, but that's even more, the, the drive, I think, for you to say, I want it now, because we've been promised tomorrow, 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 tomorrow. Yeah. Let us, let us try to work with our capital budget folks and work with the schools also, because the priorities on the schools, on renovating the schools and modernizing the schools, they typically are shared with us by DCPS. Brian, is anything you want to? Brian Hanlon is our Director of the Department of General Services. And for those of you who don't know, we brought together, what, four or five different agencies to create DGS. And I tell you, I tell you, what Brian has done to make that happen is incredibly smooth process. We thought we would be better off with one agency doing the construction, and that's what they're doing. And he pretty much has it in his sights, the priorities around the schools especially. So Brian, you may want to speak to some of this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had thick brown hair about two years ago. Look what it's doing to me. Yeah, what I'd like to do is actually come to the school and take a look at the conditions. And, you know, as the mayor said, there, you know, I, I see a lot of different, you know, parks and schools around the city, and, and we can't fix everything at once. And, but when it's, when it's your place, it, it is more urgent. So I'd be glad to set up a meeting with you and, and go take a look, and we'll, we'll talk with John and DCPS and, and try to see what we can do.
It may be we can start the Sit team earlier, right? Would there be a Sit team associated with this?
Yeah, there is, Mr. Mayor. There's a Sit team, a school improvement team that we organize with, with the school and the community for every, every one of our projects. So that's something that we could begin.
I just like to say that we have already done that. We had a participatory process with more than 100 members of the community, and that resulted in conceptual drawings that are posted on our website, garrisonelementary.org. So that initial step has already been conducted, and I'm sure that the Sit meetings involve much more than that. But we, we are ready.
Yeah. I, I hear you. So is that okay if we have John come out as a first step, then? I mean, Brian come out?
Yeah, absolutely.
I was Bill a couple of weeks ago, wasn't I?
We would also like to...
I was thinking about John sitting right in front of you.
We would also like to point out that Garrison is sitting on four and a half acres of land, and our, our conceptual drawings hit on every single Sustainable DC policy item. And we strongly believe in that policy, and we would like for their, for that four and a half acres of land to be one of DC's urban parks.
Okay. See, I gave him another name, but he's, he has a hot issue. It's like Joe will be out to see you. Yes, yes, sir.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for two things in particular. One of the, I'm Patrick Kennedy. I'm an ANC in Foggy Bottom. One of them is reflected in the budget, and that's the renovation for Engine Company Number 23. That's been a very important, it's been our neighborhood firehouse for 102 years in Foggy Bottom in need of renovation. I know the firemen there will appreciate it, so I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Additionally, the Francis Stevens is in the capital budget for a couple of years down the line, but I, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you and Chancellor Henderson for really coming together to make a solution for Francis Stevens. It was originally on the closure list. I want to thank you for keeping that open under the banner of the school without walls and really delivering a quality neighborhood public school for Foggy Bottom, the West End and Dupont Circle. That is just so important to our neighborhood and the viability of our neighborhood for families. So I really want to thank you for that. One quick question. Do you or any of your staff have any idea when you're going to send the Stevens School disposition to the council?
You know, you mean in terms of amalgamating it with, with?
And Ivy Mount.
Oh, Stevens, excuse me, yeah. Oh, old Stevens, okay. Yeah, because Ivy Mount, I was, I was talking to somebody about that yesterday, that it's going to be, Ivy Mount is a program that serves children with disabilities, and it's another of our efforts to bring our kids back into the city. Do you happen to know, Brian?
I, I do not. My name's George now. No, I don't. That's act, that particular disposition, almost all of them are handled through DGS, but that one in particular is actually being managed through the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development. I don't know if there's a, does Victor have a representative here today?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, hi, Jeff. There's Jeff Miller.
Jeff, do you know?
We've identified a joint venture partner in acreage companies, and they also have partnered with a educational use, which will be housed inside the actual Stevens School itself. And the balance of the site will be built into what we expect to be office development.
Yeah, when, when is the process to give that to the council?
We think, we, we should hope to be able to bring an LDA to council by the end of this, end of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Fiscal year or calendar year?
Calendar year, I beg your pardon. So, so by fall.
It's a wild hop, isn't it?
Yes, we've, we're still negotiating, it's a very complicated deal because we have two partners involved in it, so we're still negotiating that LDA.
That's some historical requirements associated with it too, didn't it?
Hi, my name is Joshua Matfis.
How you doing, Joshua?
Good, good. Given how much the district has to gain from statehood, both financially and in terms of our, our democratic rights, what's in the budget this year? Not just, you know, what we could do with, with more revenue, but what's actually in the budget this year to advocate for those rights?
Well, we can't, believe it or not, we are prohibited from putting money in our budget to lobby for our own rights. I don't know if you all knew that.
If, if I may, as of 2008, we're actually allowed to use local funds to advocate for those rights.
Yeah, but I think we're still constrained in what we can use those funds for. Eric, you want to speak to that?
Even though that prohibition's been removed, we have to send the money through indirect grants. Over the last few years, we've been sending money to the Office of the Secretary for grants that would go then to nonprofit organizations. We're continuing to fund that in this year's budget, but we just can't put money for the DC government to lobby directly, but we do send it through nonprofits, and we'll continue to do that in the mayor's budget this year. It's a competitive process, as you obviously support competitive processes. I think DC Vote has been one of the recipients over the last two years, and there's been another group as well. I forget the name of it right now that's received grant money as well. So there's a competitive process through the Office of the Secretary, and that will continue again in this fiscal year.
I, I think too, that we really have, you know, enlightened, enlightened self-interest, to me, is the best form of advocacy. And I think we're just not there yet in terms of people feeling the sense of urgency to do something about this. I mean, I go to rallies, I, I do everything I can personally to involve myself in this issue. And I, the, the biggest gathering I've ever seen is about 1,500 to 2,000 people out of all the people who live in the city. So there's so much more that needs to be done in order to get people motivated to get out and say, look, these are my rights and I'm not going to stand for this anymore. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your time today. You answered my question about, I'm Mary Frances Gornick, I'm sorry. You answered my question about the, the budget allocations for health, but I wanted to find out about employee, employee development. I know that there is a loan repayment program for physicians, including PAAs now and probably social workers. Is there anything that can be done in your budget for other professionals who are working in public health?
Well, I can't tell you the specific numbers, but I know every budget, including the Department of Human Resources, has money for training in it, for professional development. If you'd like, we can try to get our staff to research how much there is, and we can get that to you if that would be helpful. So yes, there, you don't see it readily, because of course, we can't, as you can imagine, we can't go over every detail here, but there is money in the budget, in virtually every budget, for professional development, and we'd be happy to try to get that to you if that would be...
Yes, I think that would, that would be conducive to you, because it would be actually trying to increase the number of people who want to stay in the district, because you're increasing their professional development.
Right. No, it's, it's an important issue, and you know what's sad, and you probably know this better than I do, but when there are budget cuts, which fortunately, we haven't had to do much of that this year, but when there are budget cuts, one of the first things to go is training, professional training for staff, because it's, you know, very few people... You actually, it's our fifth town hall, I mean, you're the first person to ask about that issue. And it would be good if we could get more people to talk about it, because it is such an important investment to make. We believe that, and there is money, of course, in the budget for that, but a lot of people just don't pay attention to it. Other questions? Comments? Thank you all very much for coming out on a Saturday.